Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call out a recess. Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition 22P. Fifteen ninety-five Meadows Solar LLC's request for a special use permit to construct a solar energy system in Dixon Township here in Lee County. If somehow you're listening to me but not on Zoom, but you want to be, the Zoom meeting ID is nine one five three nine two three nine one five four. The password is, as always, two zero nine eight four zero. If you don't want to participate, well, tonight's not participatory anyway. If you want to just view and listen to us on YouTube, go to your computer, cellphone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County Ill Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase. Find the session date you want, which is presumably, Jonathan tells me, tonight is the thirteenth of September, that you want, and click on it, and you should be have the pleasure of seeing and listening to us. If none of this works, or you don't know how to do it, you can call Dee Duffy's Technical Assistance Hotline, eight one five nine seven three three four four nine. As we're coming out of a recess, there's no formal opening required, but I note the presence tonight of Mr. Forster, the Chair of the ZBA, Mr. Burrowitz, Vice Chair, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Pratt is here, Mr. Sean Hollis is here, the Honorable Dee Duffy, Zoning Administrator of Lee County is here, as is her able Alternative Energy Coordinator, Alice, the Honorable State's Attorney, Charlie Boonstra is present. We have no interested parties in the courtroom. Jonathan from IT, Kelly, our ever-suffering court reporter, and himself are present. eleven folks in the courtroom, no interested parties in person. Jonathan, who do we have on Zoom, if anyone? Petitioners' represented lawyer, Courtney Kennedy's on Zoom. That makes a total attendance tonight of twelve whole people. All right, that housekeeping provision having been done. Sometimes I go through the machinations of reading about fact-finding and recommendations and Robert's Rules of Order, but we've been together so often for two or three years that I'm not going to bore those assembled with that protocol, and I will just indicate to the zoning board that the floor is open for motions.
Your Honor, I will start with draft number one on the finding of facts. The motion being, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, herein after ZBA or zoning board, finds that on July one, two thousand twenty-two, Meadows Solar LLC, herein after Meadows Solar, developer, applicant, or petitioner, indirectly owned by another limited liability company, Trajectory Energy Partners LLC, herein after Trajectory Energy or Trajectory, filed a petition with the Lee County Illinois Zoning Administration Office, which is numbered two one dash P dash fifteen ninety-five, requesting a special use permit to construct and operate a five-megawatt AC solar energy system, herein after SES, solar farm, solar garden, project, facility, or development, on a rounded-off twenty-four acres, herein after the leasehold area, inside a larger, plus or minus six hundred and ten acres, property index number parentheses pin, close parentheses, number zero seven dash zero two dash two eight dash two zero zero dash zero zero four, herein after the project person, owned by the Dixon Park District and zone Ag One, all within Dixon Township, and one and a half miles, within one and a half miles of the boundary of the city of Dixon, more particularly directly south of Cemetery Road, and about six hundred fifty feet east of Washington Avenue. Subsequently, on July sixth, two thousand twenty-two, amended was filed, and then on July twenty-eighth, a second amended petition was filed, which added a request for two variances attending to the proposed project. That would be the motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion on the motion, your motion, Mr. Hughes? So you first.
No additional comment.
Okay, Mr. Forster has a comment.
I would like to make one correction to the motion. According to our new business from last meeting, it should be petition twenty-two dash P dash fifteen ninety-five.
I assume Mr. Hughes will take that as friendly amendment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yep. The other board members care to comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes with the correction that petition is number twenty-two, and that in the third to last line, after the word amended, I added petition, as I think Mr. Hughes did. Adoption of the motion is, requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Oops. Just a minute. Thought I had it on red font, but I don't. Okay, the floor's again open.
Judge, on point two, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the following submission of the initial application, proper notice of filing a petition and of an impending ZBA hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and furthermore, the United States Full Service First Class Mailings of the same notice were sent to adjacent real estate property owners whose properties would be adjacent to the proposed project's boundary and to the city of Dixon, which boundary is within the statutory jurisdictional reach of one and a half mile, and zoning administrator Dee Duffy published the hearing information on her department's pages at the Lee County website, and physically posted the same where the proposed development would be located. That's the motion.
Second. Got one. Discussion, you first, Mr. Burrow.
Nothing.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so ably read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Surprisingly, that motion is adopted as well, and onward and upward.
I move the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the impending hearing was initially announced by Chairman Bruce Forster on the evening of Thursday, September first, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM, in the main courthouse on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse. And, under the authority provided by its own rules prior to the actual initiating the hearing, the Zoning Board of Appeals engaged the services of Tim Slavin, a retired circuit court judge, as the facilitator for the proceeding.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. It's your motion, Mr. Sean Hollis, so you have the opportunity to say anything in support thereof.
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as well-read by Mr. Sean Hollis, with the exception of the pronunciation of the facilitator's name. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Like working hard without the G. Okay, here we go.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the first stage of the public hearing regarding the petition for a special use permit was for your Lee County ZBA to accept testimony, hear arguments, and receive public comments. As suggested above, the evidentiary and comments portion of the hearing began on September one, two thousand twenty-two, and concluded on September seventh, two thousand twenty-two, consisting of two total sessions, both beginning at seven PM in that former main courtroom in the old Lee County Courthouse. The totality of these sessions of the first days comprised, in total, approximately three and one quarter hours of hearing time.
That's hot. You're good. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well-read by Mr. Pratt. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Rowlin, rowlin, rowlin. I was going to say go Irish, but we're not going to go there tonight, so.
Go Bears?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to say go Bears. Next.
Moving on to draft number five. The motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that throughout the hearing process, no longer were there any mandated COVID-19 safety measures in place for public gatherings, such as the ZBA hearing, but attendees were encouraged to wear masks and maintain a reasonable social distance within the hearing room, and there were never more than three interested parties that personally appeared within the hearing room, and additionally, through the auspices of the Lee County IT Department and Lee County Zoning Officer, Ms. Dee Duffy, interested parties were also given the opportunity to remotely and virtually participate in the process by video or teleconferencing on the Zoom platform through the use of a computer, cellphone, or similar device at location of their choosing. And furthermore, interested parties could remotely view and listen to the proceedings in near-real time, or later in the recorded mode on a YouTube feed, also courtesy of the Lee County ID Department and Ms. Duffy. And lastly, the entirety of the proceedings was taken down by a certified shorthand reporter and subsequently transcribed. Those transcripts of all testimony, arguments, public comments, and ZBA debate were and continue to be available on the zoning and planning webpages within the Lee County website. That being the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
No.
Any other board member wish to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited by Mr. Hughes. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, and we move on.
Mr. Facilitator, on point six, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that over the course of the first stage, everyone, petitioner and interested parties, were given a complete and fair opportunity to be heard. Each was given the chance to present evidence, including witnesses and exhibits, and cross-examine the witnesses of others, and to present a closing argument, statement, or public comment, either orally or in writing. That's the motion.
All right, got it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I motion, we
Have it unanimously. Next.
I motion, we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits.
Second. God, excuse me, I was. Got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Sean Hollis?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion, that we, the members of the Lee County Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Young, the new member, Mr. Sean Hollis, it's so far, two for two. Not a roll.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that three people took the witness stand, were placed under oath or affirmation, and testified. Those witnesses, in order of their appearance, with a very brief summary of what they had to say, were as follows. Mr. Dustin Elliott, offered by the applicant, is Trajectory's Energies Director of Legal and Public Affairs. On behalf of that company, he committed to being bound by all representations made in its application and statements made under oath by representatives of that entity during the ZBA hearing. He went on to give an overview of the proposed SES, an explanation of the essence and process of a community solar project, its physical footprint, the general nature of the equipment to be installed, the interconnection with the nearby ComEd grid distribution line, the community meeting, communication with the city of Dixon, lease and setback waiver arrangements with the Mayberry Developmental Center, public benefits decommissioning, and agriculture impact mitigation agreement herein after AMA, and the ways in which the proposed facility would meet the requirements of the pertinent provisions of the Lee County ordinance. Mr. Joshua Buninski, offered by the petitioner and a partner of trajectory LLC, filled in more specifics of the proposed project, such things as possible technical specifications, more particularly how the consumer economics of the community solar project works in practice, and the state of the AMA. Mr. Dwayne Long, Executive Director of the Dixon Park District, offered by the petitioner, enlightened us on the motivational genius of the thinking out of the box solar facility concept, such as lowering the district's energy costs to keep taxes in line, and the greater community electric cost benefit, and the relationship of the Dixon Park District with trajectory, to venue undergone and selecting it as the developer of this project, and the financial arrangements that were a part thereof. There were no other witnesses. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt so well-read it. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. In the win column.
Mr. Facilitator, moving on to draft number nine, the motion being, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the following exhibits were admitted into evidence by the facilitator and considered by the board. Petitioners' exhibits. Pet number one, a copy of the Dixon Telegraph's certificate of publication with attached notice of hearing. Pet number two, a hard copy of Dustin Elliott's PowerPoint presentation. Pet number three, copy of Tim Shipman's City of Dixon zoning officer email suggesting the city's position on the proposed project. Pet number four, Meadows Solar LLC's application supplementing its petition. Pet number five, property value report by Cone Resnick, zoning, excuse me, Cone Resnick, period, zoning officer exhibits, ZO number A, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's Natural Resources Report for Meadows Solar LLC. No other party introduced any exhibits.
Do I hear a second? Got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited by Mr. Hughes. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, the ball's back in your court.
Mr. Facilitator, on point ten, I move the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that following the close of the testimonial phase, the board heard what could be characterized as closing arguments or public comment from Courtney Kennedy, attorney for the applicant, who urged, based on the evidence produced, the Lee County ZBA to recommend to the Lee County Board that Meadows Solar LLC petition should be approved, and the special use permit issued, along with the variances requested. Lynn Saunders, a representative of the United Brotherhood of Carpenters, who expressed support for this proposed project on behalf of this organization. No other parties made any public comments.
Second.
Second.
Two of them. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Seeing none, hearing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well-read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it unanimously again. Next.
I motion, the Lee County ZBA finds, through both its application and the testimony of two of its agents, the proposed SES is part of a community solar project sanctioned by acts of the Illinois Legislature. It follows individual consumers to save money on their electric bills from the energy produced by the project, sometimes referred to by the moniker solar garden, similar to how one would save on an electric bill if one installed solar panels on their own property. More specifically, herein, Solar Metal or Meadows Solar LLC pays the upfront costs to plan, build, maintain, and connect the proposed solar garden to ComEd's power grid. When an individual electrical consumer who must be using the electricity in the ComEd utility territory signs up or subscribes without cost, one is asking, in effect, to receive a portion of the proposed project's monthly output. Meadows Solar LLC will analyze a given subscriber's energy demand to determine its pro-rata subscription size. Each month, the subscriber would then be billed by ComEd for the amount of electrical consumption by its subscription, but from the gross bill amount is given a credit based on its subscription size to reach a lesser than amount due. That's my motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Sean Hollis?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as well-recited by Mr. Sean Hollis. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. It's a winner, too. Unlike the Cubs or the Irish. Next.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that, according to its application and the testimony of one of its agents, the useful life of the proposed community solar project would be twenty-five years, which could be extended by provisions of the lease with the Dixon Park District for two subsequent five-year terms.
I, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about this motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that, according to its application and the testimony of one of its agents, the useful life of the proposed community solar project would be twenty-five years, which could be extended by the provisions of the lease with the Dixon Park District for two subsequent five-year terms. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
About anyone opposed? Say nay. The motion is adopted. Back around the horn.
The next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and the testimony of one of its agents, that the components of the SES would be approximately fifteen thousand photovoltaic panels measuring approximately six foot long, three foot wide, and one inch thick, set on a south-facing fixed-tilt mounting system, meaning the panels would not move, in an east-west configuration, mounted on steel support pilings driven into the ground between eight and twelve feet deep, connected to each other by collection lines, and then connected to the nearby ComEd grid utility line approximately forty feet from the northern edge of the solar garden, and remotely monitored by communication lines, and up to forty inverters and two transformers.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited by Mr. Hughes. Adoption requires, as you vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and unanimous. Next.
Mr. Facilitator, on point fourteen, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and the testimony of its agents, there will be an access road, the only one that the petitioner proposes.
Hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony of its agents, there will be an access road, the only one the petitioner proposes. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries. Unanimous. Okay, gentlemen.
I would like to motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and the testimony of one of its agents, there are no plans for any ancillary structures, but there may be temporary lay-down staging areas.
All right, do I hear a second? Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Sean Hollis?
I misread area and said areas. I'd like to correct that.
Got it. Okay. Okay, that. That's fine. Um, anything else? Mr. Schoenhold first.
No, no other comment.
Um, any board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, as, uh, read by Mr. Schoenhold. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, guys. Roll along.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Pratt. Make a motion that the Lee County Z B A finds that, as noted above, the last. Iteration of the petition for a special use permit for the project was filed with the Lee County zoning office on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. About nine months prior to that time, on November eighteen, twenty twenty-one, the Lee County Board Chairman signed into law the newest S E S ordinance passed by the county board. Number eleven dash twenty-one dash zero zero five. Which would then be the provisions most specifically applicable to the petition at issue. Which while not yet specifically codified, the Z B A adopts the facilitator's professional expectation on such codification. Also in place at the time the petition was filed were certain provisions of the Lee County ordinance, performance standards. Section ten dash fifteen dash one. And special exceptions, variations and non-conforming usings. Section ten dash two B dash one. Which unless supplemented by the new S C S ordinance would also be applicable.
Okay, go here a second.
Second.
Got it. Any, uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion. So well read by Mr. Pratt, ad- adoption requires a vote by majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The winner. Going onward and upward.
Mister facilitator, the next motion would be, the Lee County Z B A finds. That the petitioner represented in the testimony it produced, that while not yet done. A qualified engineer would certify that the foundation and the design of the solar panels was within accepted standards.
I hear a second.
Okay.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, that should be sufficient.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds. That the petitioner represented in the testimony it produced that while not yet done, a qualified engineer would certify. That the foundation and design of the solar panels was within accepted standards. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both by nay. Unanimous. Yep.
For chairman on point eighteen, I move the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner. Represented in its application and in the testimony produced. That it would adhere to the applicable local, state and federal regulatory standard pertaining to electricity generation and transmission. And the National Electrical Code and that the S C S components would be under. Writers laboratory listed or a comparable safety standard. And that the solar panels would be designed with an anti-reflective parentheses A R coating.
I got a second.
Second.
Got it. Uh. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
I don't think so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow and displayed on the screen. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That too goes in the win column.
I would like to move to adopt motion nineteen. The Lee County Z B A finds that in the testimony it produced. The petitioner stated that the power and communication lines running. Between banks of solar panels would probably be buried underground, except from the point of interconnection. To existing utility owned above-ground. Electrical wires.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenhold?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is what the Lee County Z B A finds that in the testimony it produced. The petitioner stated that the power and communication lines running between banks of the solar panels would probably be buried underground, except. From the point of interconnection to existing utility owned above-ground electrical wires. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Nineteen is in the win column.
Your honor, make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that based on representations made in its application and in. The testimony of its agents. The developer indicated that no ground-mounted system, equipment or structure. Except for transmission lines, utility poles or any poles or piece of equipment connecting a ground-mounted piece of equipment. To an electrical, to a, to an electric transmission line. Within the proposed development would exceed twenty feet.
How about that? Anybody want to second that one? Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that based on the representations made in its application. And in the testimony of its agent, the developer indicated that no ground-mounted system, equipment or structure. Except for transmission lines, utility poles or any poles or piece. Of equipment connecting a ground-mounted piece of equipment to an electrical transmission line within the proposed development would exceed twenty, twenty feet in height. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Twenty of them are behind you. And moving on to the twenty-first in the draft. Motion being the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner represented in its application and through the testimony it produced. That the leasehold area would be enclosed by a chain link fence at least seven feet in height. And it would affix signage in accordance with any S C. A A N S I. And OSHA standards and regulations to that fence. And it would maintain the fence to prevent the growth of woody vegetation and naxious weeds along and within it. Go here a second.
Okay.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote is going to be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Alrighty. That's another one.
Mister chairman, moving to.
Mr. Burrow.
Twenty-two, I move the Lee County Z B A finds that the developer claimed in its application or through the testimony it produced. That as to equipment, all ground-mounted S E S components would not be within fifteen feet of any property line nor within four hundred feet. Of the foundation of an adjacent dwelling, except for the Mabley Developmental Center. Which the applicant apparently and in our opinion correctly construes as a primary dwelling. And for which a variance is being requested infra nor. Within sixty feet from the center line of any township roadway. Nor within seventy-five feet from the center line of any county roadway. Nor within fifty feet from the right of way of any state road. Nor within four hundred feet of any property line of a planted subdivision. Nor within five hundred feet from an inverter, transformer. Or storage equipment to the foundation of any adjacent non-participating primary dwelling. And as to fencing, there would be no fencing within three feet of any not participating owner's property.
Mouthful, but I got it. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any other, uh, any comments, Mr. Burrow?
I think it's good.
Uh, any other board member wish to comment, question? All right, hearing none, seeing none. I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr., uh, uh, Burrow read it and is displayed on the screen. In front of you gentlemen, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed by no. Motion carries. I just got to keep you guys. Awake, quite frankly, keep myself awake by thinking things. All right.
I would like to make more.
Yep, go ahead.
Motion twenty-three, the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner has indicated. Through the testimony of one of its agents, that there would be no security cameras located within the proposed development. And in its application that knock boxes containing keys to the gates would be provided at the entrances for emergency personnel access.
Uh, do I hear a second? Got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenhold?
Nothing more.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds. That the petitioner has indicated through the testimony of one of its agents, that there would be no security cameras located within the proposed development and. In its application that max boxes containing keys to the gates would be provided at the entrance for emergency personnel entrances. For emergency personnel access. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote's going to be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Got it.
Your honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
Make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner has promised in its application and through the testimony of one of its agents. That no lighting is planned at the proposed S E S development. But that if any would be installed, it would be, it would be shielded down.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
Have to get rid of one would be a.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Actually, I don't. Just a minute. You're absolutely right, but I'd never pick it up if I don't. Put it in red and then cross it off. Okay. Does that look right, Mr. Pratt?
That's my motion.
Okay. Forgot if I asked for a second, so I'll do it again. Second. Right. Um, any, anything else you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner has presented in its application and through the testimony of one of its agents. That no lighting is planned at the proposed S E S development, but that if any would be installed, it. Would be shielded and downcast. Uh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Yes.
Good one. For that, I'm going to put a comment there. All right, next, next the. Uh, the next motion being, the Lee County Z B A finds. That in its application and through the testimony it produced, petitioner indicated that the inverters and transformers would emit a low humming noise. But committed that any operating sounds emitted from the project would meet the Illinois Pollution Control Board noise standards. Except that the I P C B noise standard may be exceeded during the construction phase, that being the motion. Um, go here a second.
Sorry.
Um. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, that should be sufficient.
Okay, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, uh, recited. Excuse me, by Mr. Hughes and displayed on the board in front. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay. Go ahead.
Mister chairman, on section twenty-six, I move the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner. Asserted in its petition and through the testimony it produced that. There would be no concentrated glare onto nearby structures, roadways or other public areas. From the proposed project. And furthermore, as previously noted, the panels would contain A R coatings and. Due to the engineering and business focus on capturing as much solar energy as possible. The array is certainly designed to minimize flare so as not to waste any available sunlight.
Well, here a second.
Second.
Got it. Any, uh, comment on your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and, uh, displayed, as read by Mr. Burrow displayed up front. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, we can keep on going.
All right. I really love. I would like to make a motion that the Lee County Z B A finds that. There was no clear evidence of any nearby planted subdivisions and. While there are non-participating dwellings adjacent to the whole six hundred and ten acre parcel. Within which the twenty-four acre leasehold area is situated, there is only one next to the leasehold area, i.e. The Mabley Developmental Center. So. For such reason, the petitioner is requesting a variance of the ordinance's screening requirements. Or for an interpretation. Construction that as used in the particular section of the ordinance, the term parcel is equivalent to the leasehold area. And as to the Mabley Developmental Center, the petitioner committed to the ordinance screening requirements.
All right, do I hear a second?
Okay.
Um. Um, before the second, Mr. Mr. Schoenhold, we take a friendly amendment from the chair. I, I just caught the, trying to be consistent throughout. Ask you guys to be consistent throughout your motions, that the. Leasehold area is the twenty-four acres and the project parcel is the big, um. Uh, bigger section. Can I, can we change the, your motion to project parcel instead of six, just hundred, just six, ten acre parcel?
I'm fine with that.
Still second that, Mr. Pratt?
Sure.
Um, all right, thank you. Mr. Schoenhold, any, any, uh, comment on your motion?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that. There was no clear evidence of any nearby planted subdivisions and while there are. Non-participating dwellings adjacent to the whole six hundred and ten acre project parcel. Within which the twenty-four acre leasehold area is situated, there is only one next to the leasehold area. That is the Mabley Developmental Center. So. For such reason, the petitioner is requesting a variance of the ordinance's screening requirements. Or for an interpretation construction that as used in the particular section of the ordinance, the term parcel is equivalent to the leasehold area and. As to the Mabley Developmental Center, the petitioner committed to the ordinance screening requirements. Adoption of the motion requires a, a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. And here, just over one-third of the way through, in case you wonder what I'm thinking about as I sit here, um, so you can keep going.
Your honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
I make a, I make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner has stated through the testimony it produced. That there would not be any outdoor stories as part of the development.
Okay, by your second.
Second.
Hearing a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
I changed your and to any.
I changed your and to any. It would not be.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Um, anything else, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member?
Yes, um, I'm wondering if we shouldn't add except during the construction period because they will have a lay-down yard.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Take a look at that, Mr. Hughes, and let me highlight it.
That's, that's fine.
Here it is. That look good?
Yes, sir.
That okay with you, Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Any other board member? All right, I will put the question then, uh, hearing no other board member wanting to speak. Question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has stated through the testimony it produced that there would not be any outdoor storage as part of the development except during the construction period. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Save that and go on.
Moving on to draft number twenty-nine, the motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that through a combination of its application and the testimony it produced, petitioner has stated that if approved, construction of the proposed SES development would take between a three-month peak period and twelve months overall to complete beginning during the year twenty-twenty-three and the proposed construction activity would occur between the hours of six a.m. and nine p.m., seven days per week, and that other than the peak period when all trucks would be weight and dimensionally U.S. and Illinois Department of Transportation compliant, it would be little to no effect on traffic conditions in the area of the proposed development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got one. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
Uh, no, I'll let it be at that.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well and accurately read by Mr. Hughes and displayed here on the board. Uh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Twenty-nine's down.
Mr. Chairman, Burrow, on point thirty, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application and through the testimony of one of its agents, after flyer notices to the Lee County and Dixon Township Board members, the Lee County zoning office staff and all entities owning real estate within one thousand feet of the proposed project, it hosted a community meeting July eighteenth, on July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, from three p.m. to six p.m. within the Wooden Wonderland Shelter on Washington Avenue and Dixon, at which approximately thirty-five attendees appeared who showed a site plan and whose questions were answered.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Next.
All right, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
Don't think so.
Any other board member? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and is, uh, by Mr. Burrow and displayed here on the board. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed by nay. Motion's adopted unanimously.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion on point thirty-one. The Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has submitted in its application a schematic survey and site plan for the proposed metal solar SES with existing conditions of the project parcel showing or that includes the following of or for the proposed development property. Property lines from the existing boundaries include the names of adjacent property owners and the current use of those properties and the existing public roads and the topography at two-foot intervals and shows the type and percentage coverage of existing vegetation, forest at fifty-five point three percent, crops, pasture, and grassland at twenty-nine point eight percent, developed area at thirteen point two percent, open water one point three percent, wetlands at point three percent, and scrub at point one percent. Through the inclusion of a national wetlands inventory view, that there are no waterways, streams, and rivers within the proposed project parcel and a copy of the most current FEMA firm map of the proposed project parcel and a map Lee County soil survey and surface water drainage patterns, but not drainage tiles as the develop, developer has not done a drainage tile survey, but one of its agents testified will be done prior to the beginning of construction and existing utilities and the lack of pipelines.
Um, second.
Okay.
Got a second. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schonhold?
No, nothing, nothing more.
Any other board member? Uh, hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Schonhold and displayed on the board. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That one goes on the left side of the ledger as well.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has submitted an SES plan in its application and to some degree its testimony that adequate, adequately shows or explains the following, the proposed development property. Plan location and spacing of the proposed solar panels and the plan location of one access road and the planned steel chain link fence and the planned interconnection that would directly tie into the ComEd utility line located immediately to the south of the proposed project site. The proposed development's planned new electrical equipment and an acceptable weed grass control plan and an acceptable landscape plan.
Forty seconds. I, I want to make sure, I, I got turned around a couple times on the, on the map.
Yeah, I think south should be north.
North, right?
Yeah, as I read that, I didn't think.
You'll change your motion to from south to north?
Yep.
Motion. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Uh, anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put, excuse me, is on the adoption of the motion as, uh, read, uh, by Mr. Pratt and displayed on the board, uh, with the correction from south to north. Um, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion's adopted. What do you say? Hey, hey, what do you say?
Moving on, uh, the next item, draft number thirty-three, motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has in its application only submitted exemplar manufacturer's specifications for the equipment for a small-scale fixed panel, direct utility-connected community solar project, but has committed to providing project particular specifications before a building permit is issued.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, that should be sufficient.
Okay. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the, uh, on the adoption of the motion as so able to read by Mr. Hughes and displayed on the board, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. There we go.
Mr. Facilitator, on point thirty-four, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and testimony produced, the applicant explained that the point of interconnection would be into the adjacent ComEd utility line running along Cemetery Road immediately to the north of the proposed project.
All right, um... Second. Thank you. All right, anything you want to say about your, uh, motion, Mr. Burrow?
No.
Um, anything, any other board member wants to address? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and testimony produced, the applicant explained that the point of interconnection would be into the adjacent ComEd utility run, line running along Cemetery Road immediately to the north of the proposed project. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That one's adopted as well. Passed. Winner. And we can keep going.
I would like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds based on representations made in its application and common local knowledge that there is no airport or airport approach zone within five hundred feet of the proposed project.
Second.
Second.
Got a second? Uh, anything you want to say, Mr. Schonhold?
No.
Any other, uh, board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds based on representation made in its application and common local knowledge that there is no airport or a airport approach zone within five hundred feet of the proposed project. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. Gents?
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on its application and on the testimony heard, petitioner submitted an acceptable fire protection and prevention plan and agreed that it would provide onsite training...
I couldn't get it by you.
To the local fire protection district.
I laid that one out like a...
Yeah, even underlined it.
Darn it. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own, uh, motion, Mr.?
No, no comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that based on its application and on the testimony heard, the petitioner submitted an acceptable fire protection and prevention plan and agreed that it would provide onsite training to quote local fire protection district, end quote. To the local fire protection district, end quote. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed by nay.
The next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that the developer, as shown in its application and through its produced testimony, initiated a review consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, parentheses, IDNR, close parentheses, through the department's Echo Cat program, which results indicated no record of any state-listed threatened or endangered species, Illinois natural, Illinois natural inventory sites, dedicated Illinois nature preserves, or registered land and water reserves in the vicinity of the project location, and there apparently has been no attempt to locate any historic sites within the proposed leasehold area.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
I don't believe so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so, uh, well read by Mr. Hughes and displayed on the board. Here in the courtroom, adoption of the motion, um, requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That's, that and the previous motion are both adopted, declared adopted. Okay.
Chairman, on, uh, section thirty-eight, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner acknowledged in its application and through the testimony it produced, the Lee County ordinance requirements for it to submit a road use agreement between it and appropriate governing bodies to the Lee County Board at least thirty days in advance of it being issued a building permit.
Do I, excuse... Um, hearing a second, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner acknowledged in its application and through the testimony it produced, the Lee County ordinance requirement for it to submit a road use agreement between it and appropriate governing bodies to the Lee County Board at least thirty days in advance of it being issued a bird building permit. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okey-dokey, that's, uh, adopted as well.
I would like to move that the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application and through its testimony, as to stormwater and drainage, drainage, the ZBA was not presented with a stormwater management plan or a drainage permit, but the petitioner assured to adhere to AIMA standards for soil retention and restoration and providing an engineer-certified stormwater management plan to obtain a drainage permit from the Lee County engineer, and there would be no topsoil taken from the proposed project site, but should it happen to do so, it would follow the requirements of the AIMA. And because twenty-five point eight percent of the project parcel ground is classified as prime farmland as determined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, to minimize any disturbance to the same by following the recommendations of the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's Natural Resources Information Report and follow all the requirements of Lee County ordinance regarding prime farm.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schonhold?
No, I don't think so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Schonhold so well read it and is displayed in front of you, gents. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion's adopted and it's time for a break. Ten minutes, twenty after.
All right, floor's back open.
Your honor, make a motion. I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application and through the testimony it produced, the developer acknowledged its ordinance-driven obligation to enter into an AMA prior to obtaining a building permit.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Okay.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application and through the testimony it produced, uh, the developer acknowledged its ordinance-driven obligation to enter into an AMA prior to obtaining a building permit. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, motion carries. Yes.
Moving on to the next motion. Uh, the Lee County ZBA finds through its application and testimony it produced, the petitioner did commit to contacting any drainage districts, which area includes the location of the proposed SES to confirm that they were unaware of any such tiles and if any were found and subsequently damaged, to repair the same within the standard AMA provisions of 12 months.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, um, actually, I don't know that there's ness- any change necessary on here because the provision of 12 months is what was reflected in testimony. However, I did want to state, um, that the AMA addresses two different areas, one adjacent properties and one, um, damage within the area. Um, the damage within the project area is a 12-month provision. The, um, the adjacent properties, if it's impacting the adjacent properties, it's actually an immediate. However, they've stated they will comply with the AMA, so I think that the wording in this draft or in this motion is appropriate as it stands.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA through its application and testimony it produced, the petitioner did, uh, excuse me, did commit to contacting any drainage districts, which area includes the location of the proposed SES, to confirm that they were unaware of any such tiles and if any were found and subsequently damaged, to repair the same within the standard AMA provision of 12 months. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Okay, passed.
Mr. Chairman, on point forty-two, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner did not produce a communication interference analysis, but did through the testimony it produced, aware that there would be no such interference and given the relatively small scale of the proposed project, it is unlikely to cause any such interference. And if there were to be any such interference, the petitioner committed in the testimony it produced to comply with the Lee County ordinance requirements to respond and mitigate.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, any other thing you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
I think it's okay, good.
Any other, uh, board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the motion as Mr. Burrow so ably read and displayed and is displayed here in the courtroom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. Just a minute here. Okay, next.
I would like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner did not produce a, oh, sorry, I'm on one. I would like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application, the partition- petitioner committed handle, store, and dispose of all solid and hazardous waste related to the construction, operation, and maintenance of the proposed SES as required by the Lee County ordinance, but did explain in its testimony that it did not believe there would be any hazardous material involved in the construction, operation, and maintenance of the proposed SES.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Schoenholz so ably just read it and is displayed and the board here in the courtroom, adoption of the motion is requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Okey-dokey.
Your honor, make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that any decommissioning provisions of the Lee County ordinance are now a function of an executed AMA and the issuance of a building permit.
Uh, second? Second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that any decommissioning provisions of the Lee County ordinance are now a function of an executed AMA and the issuance of a building permit. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is a winner. And we go onward and upward. Thanks. Just a minute. Okay. Sorry. The next motion being, Lee County ZBA finds that if its petition is granted, the petitioner committed in its application and through testimony of one of its agents to maintain insurance as required by the Lee County ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Got it, any, um, comment, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Hughes read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote's going to be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Passed, next.
Mr. Chairman, on point forty-six, the Lee, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that there was evidence that the lease score for the project parcel is seventy-four.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, any other board mem- uh, excuse me, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, no, sir.
Any board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether Lee County ZBA finds that there was evidence that the lease score for the project parcel is seventy-four. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Guess what, that's a winner too. Yep. And onward. Falls in your court.
I'd like to make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the application and any testimony heard, other than truck traffic and pile driving during construction, there would be detectable vibration associated with this proposed development.
How about if I put, insert the word no in your motion?
That would be preferable.
Otherwise, it would have been, you should have taken the others cannot find.
Yeah.
All right, with that correction, any, do I hear a second?
There you go.
Hearing a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee's County ZBA finds that based on the application and any testimony heard, other than truck traffic and pile driving during construction, there would be no detectable vibration associated with this proposed develop. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carries. Next.
Your honor, make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds based on the testimony heard that other than perhaps during construction, there would be no particle air pollution or emissions associated with this proposed solar development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Pratt, displayed here in the courtroom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Uh, passed, adopted. Next.
Next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the application and any testimony heard, other than perhaps during construction, there would be no odor associated with the proposed solar development.
How about that, do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, you, uh, just for the, you need to take out one of the base dots.
Okay. Whoops. Well, now I gotta do more than that. Spectacle glitch, hold on. Hmm, sure do. Correct that grammatical error. Anything else, Mr. Hughes?
No, I don't believe so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the applica- application and any testimony heard, that, or any testimony heard, other than perhaps during construction, there would be no odor associated with this proposed solar development. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? It's good. Next.
Mr. Chairman, on point fifty, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the testimony heard, there would be no electric, electrical magnetic fields created by the operation of, of the proposed SES.
Do I hear a second to that? Second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, I think no.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether Lee County ZBA finds that based on the testimony heard, there would be no electromagnetic fields created by the operation of the proposed SES. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Touchdown. Next.
I'd like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the testimony heard, other than perhaps during construction, there would be insignificant heat associated with the solar development that affects adjoining properties.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member?
Yes, um, again, we've got one of those negative sides, I believe that actually should be cannot find that there would be significant or there would be insignificant heat.
Yeah, you know what?
Oh, right, no. Did I read that wrong? Finds that based on the testimony heard, other than perhaps during construction, there would be yeah, insignificant, yep, I'm sorry, I misread, thank you.
Got it. You had me going too, but I think that's right, I read it.
It is, it is.
All right, any other, uh, board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put, and I'm going to read it again. The Lee County ZBA finds that based on the testimony heard, other than perhaps during construction, there would be insignificant heat associated with this solar development that affects adjoining properties. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Run scored, next.
Your honor, make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the application and testimony heard, there would be no particularly identifiable fire or explosion hazards associated with this proposed solar project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the application and testimony heard, there would be no particularly identifiable fire or explosion hazards associated with this proposed solar project. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the votes be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Goal. All right. Next, okay, uh, moving on to draft number fifty-three. The motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard, other than human waste generated during the construction phase, there would be no particularly identifiable toxic or noxious materials generated by this solar development. And the petitioner indicated that the aforementioned human waste would be handled by a port-a-potty, by port-a-potties. Uh, second?
Sorry.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Hughes so aptly read and is displayed here in the courtroom, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Winner. Okay.
Your honor, on point fifty-four, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard, there would be no particularly identifiable hazardous materials, including batteries, associated with this proposed project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your, uh, motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, Mr. Burrow so ably read and displayed here in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Rollin', 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 rah!
I would like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the character of the land within the leasehold area of the proposed metal solar LLC development is agricultural and recreational.
How about that for a second?
There you go.
Somebody, okay? Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
Nothing for it.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds the character of the land within the leasehold area and the proposed, of the proposed metal solar LLC development is agricultural and recreational. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Carried.
Your honor.
Fifty-six, yes.
Make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds based on expert reports submitted into evidence that the proposed project would have no effect on nearby property values.
And we've got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt? Everything crossed out. Oops. Oh, I had trouble, difficulty drafting it, yeah. I didn't know what, uh, so, anything you want to say about your motion? I didn't want to take that A out with it, I had a positive just to... Oh, thank you. Yep. Motion, no, no, no comment. Any, uh, other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA based on, finds based on an expert report submitted into evidence that, that the proposed project would have no effect on nearby property values. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted as well. Okay, let me save it, we go.
Moving on, the next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds based on testimony received, that the proposed project would increase, increase area employment during the construction phase through approximately six million dollars in Illinois union labor by prioritizing local hiring, but there was no evidence of identifiable, identifiable benefit to area employment during its operation.
Do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Hearing a second, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
I don't believe so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll, I'll, uh, put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Hughes well-read it and is displayed here in the courtroom. Um, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay? Okey-dokey.
Mr. Chairman, on number fifty-eight, I move Lee County ZBA finds that one of the petitioner's, petitioner's agents testified that the tax revenue generated over the extended life of the proposed project would be estimated to be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Do you mind if I cross off the word?
Yeah.
Would? That was sloppy, yes. That okay with you, Mr.?
That's fine.
Burrow? Okay, do I have a second now?
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, it's good, no.
Any other board member? Okay, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the ZBA finds that one of the petitioner's agents testified that the tax revenue generated over the extended life of the proposed project is estimated to be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted.
I would like to move that the Lee County ZBA finds that during the testimony, it was revealed that if the project was approved and completed, the Dixon Park District would be receiving fifteen hundred dollars per acre lease payment and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation from the proposed project's developer and one of the applicant's agents committed to making a contribution to the Mabley Development Center.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
I would like to just clarify that the lease payment is fifteen hundred dollars per acre per year.
Okay, so it's your motion, so you want to change your own motion to, uh, fifteen hundred annual per acre lease payment, is that all right with you?
That would be fine.
Okay? Look at it, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Got a second. Um, now, any other comments you want to make, Mr. Schoenholz, about your motion?
No.
Uh, any other board member?
I'd like to make a suggestion, uh, that we also include fifteen hundred dollar annual per acre lease payment, payments with a three percent per year escalator.
Okay.
I'd be happy with that change.
All right. Um, may I use the word including? Let me just type it out and see what you think, Mr. Pratt. Um, three percent and, um... Does that look right?
No. Because the way you've got it written, the fifteen hundred would be including, to include, or no?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yep, yep. Got it. Okay, Mr. Schoenholz, go ahead and look at that.
Should I reread the motion?
No.
Okay.
Look at what I'm, what's up there now and tell me if, tell me if, first of all, if that's what you want, because it's your, your, you've got the floor.
Yeah, that looks more incomplete.
All right, uh, you, um, floor's open for a second. Anything else you want to say about your motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Back to the floor, any, any other board member?
Just a little, um, Scribner's, you might want to include escalator in your highlighting.
Thank you. Yep. Sure do. Okay.
Question I had was concerned, Mike, was this mentioned any place at all by the, uh, petitioner?
Yes.
Okay, any other board member? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, and this one I will read. The question being put is whether Lee County ZBA finds that during the testimony, it was revealed that if the project was approved and completed, the Dixon Park District would be receiving fifteen hundred dollars annual per acre lease payments to include a three percent annual escalator and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation from the proposed project's developer and one of the applicant's agents committed to making a contribution to the Mabley Developmental, Developmental Center, and I'm going to correct that myself.
Can I?
Adoption of the motion, uh, no, the floor's done now. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay? Right. Now, Mr. Schoenholz, now's the time, if you want to make a new motion, the floor is open on the thing that you were going to say, whatever it was.
I was just going to ask if we could, um, in the top sentence, just add during the testimony of Mr. Long.
I'd have a motion to amend, Mr. Schoenholz wants to move to amend, and I'll put that in blue, you tell me where you want, that during the testimony of Mr. Long, is that what you want?
Correct.
Let's take a look at that. All right, you're moving to amend, so does that look like what you want?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second to the motion to amend?
Aye.
Anything you want to say about your motion to amend, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, and remember, the question is of whether or not the emotion which is already passed should be amended now to include the words, "Mr. Long." So, um, ad- um, adoption of the motion to amend requires a vote by the majority. Uh, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion passes. Now, the motion becomes whether or not to adopt a motion which now is pending that the Lee County ZBA finds that during the testimony of Mr. Long, it was revealed that if the project was approved and completed, the Dixon Park District would be receiving fifteen hundred dollars annual per acre lease payments to include a three percent annual escalator and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation from the proposed project's developer and one of the applicant's agents committed to making a contribution to the Mabley Developmental Center. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the amended motion requires a vote by the majority. Um, if you voted, if you made the original motion, you have to vote for this motion. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carried. Okay.
Do you want a highlight of Mr. Long?
Sort of highlighted now, but yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right.
I think it also includes of Mr. Long. I think it also includes of Mr. Long.
Thank you. Yep. Well, that, that Mrs. Duffy Mouse is murdered. Next.
Have a number sixty, I don't have a number sixty, I'll read it off the screen. Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County's EBA finds that members, that members of the ComEd customer base community would have the opportunity to reduce their electric cost by subscribing to this proposed community solar fiber.
Hear a second.
Second.
Got it, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Adoption of the motion requires, oh, excuse me, yeah, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, going on to sixty-one, which I hope Mr. Pratt has.
Um, moving on, the next motion being, the Lee County's EBA finds that regardless of any possible economic benefit, its decision to recommend or not recommend approval of the petition is not based on an increase or decrease in revenue for taxing bodies, but rather the criteria in the Lee County ordinance.
Hear a second.
Sorry?
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, that's self-explanatory.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether, uh, is on the motion, Mr. Hughes read and explained and is displayed on the board. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on section sixty-two, I move, Lee County's EBA finds that based on the testimony heard, that while there would be of course, why there would of course be photovoltaic energy conversion as part of the proposed SES, there is testimonial evidence that there are no electrical, electromagnetic fields created by this proposed SES development, thus not affecting the health of life surrounding.
Wait your second.
Second.
Got it, uh, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the being, question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow and displayed on the board. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Unanimously passed, next.
I would like to move that the Lee County's EBA finds that an agent for Meadow Solar LLC testified under oath or affirmation that the petitioner would be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements, and representations in its application for a SUP or made under oath at the public hearing for the Lee County's EBA, even if not expressly specified herein or there.
Second.
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Schoenholz and shown here on the board in the courtroom, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay. Ole, ole. Next.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, the Lee County's EBA finds that the petitioner has requested two variances from the Lee County ordinance to reduce the four hundred foot section ten dash fifteen dash twenty D one F, one B setback from the foundation of an adjacent non-participating primary dwelling, more particularly the Mabley Developmental Center, two hundred and twenty-five feet, and to interpret the concept of adjacent in the section ten dash fifteen dash twenty D, one K screening requirement for any non-participating dwelling as being from the property from the boundary of the twenty-four acre leasehold area and not the boundary of the six hundred and ten acre project parcel within which the proposed SES would lie.
Uh, do I hear a second? Hearing second, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? All right, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt so well read it and is displayed in front of you in the board, in the courtroom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay. That one goes away. No, that one wins. Okay, we're still at it.
Um, I would move that the Lee County's EBA finds that a strict application of both the setback requirement and the interpretation of the meaning of parcel in section ten, fifteen, twenty A of the Lee County ordinance would impose practical difficulties and/or particular hardships on the petitioner.
Second.
Sorry?
Got it, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
Um, no, I believe that's sufficient.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether or not the Lee County's EBA finds that a strict application of both the setback requirement and the interpretation of the meaning of parcel in section ten dash fifteen dash twenty A of the Lee County ordinance would impose practical difficulties and/or particular hardships on the petitioner. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is adopted. And you know what's coming next, you do this all the time, but next.
Mr. Chairman, on number sixty-six, I move the Lee County's EBA finds that granting the requested variations would serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but would be necessary to alleviate a hardship created by the configuration of the parcels and topography involved.
A second.
Got a second, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
Self-explanatory.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that granting the requested variations would serve as a convenience to the petitioner, what, but would be necessary to alleviate a hardship created by the configuration of the parcels and the topography involved. Adoption of the motion requires, um, vote by the majority, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Yeah. Okay.
Judge, I would like to mo, make a motion that the Lee County's EBA finds that the requested variances would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of Lee County's zoning provisions.
And I had a little technical mouse. Got away from me, yeah. One more left. After all my machinations here, you better make sure that's what, what you said.
It is.
Okay, wait your second.
Okay.
Um, you want to address anything, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that the requested variances would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of Lee County's zone, of Lee County's zoning provisions. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one is another adopted and passed motion. Yes, gentlemen?
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County's EBA finds that the petitioner has provided variance maps in its application.
Second. Got a second, um, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that the petitioner has provided variance maps in its application. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by nay. Motion carries, go on to whatever you choose to address next.
I'd move the Lee County's EBA finds that the petitioner has not provided a written waiver of the hundred and seventy-five feet of the four hundred foot setback requirement from the nearest residential structure foundation of the Mabley Developmental Center, but has indicated that the center is in the process of seeking approval of the requested setback variance from its governing state agents.
Um, second.
Sorry?
Got it, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, and the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes and displayed on the board here in the, uh, screen in, in the courtroom, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted.
Mr. Chairman, on point seventy, I move the Lee County's EBA finds that metal solar proposed special use would not have much effect on the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding properties.
Do you want to change the "any" to "much"?
Yes.
Uh, Mr.? Well. Wait your second.
Okay.
Um, actually, you said "much effects." I assumed you'd still second it with me crossing off that S, Mr. Pratt.
Uh, I, I think so.
Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Thinking, uh, worrying of any effect would imply that there can be nothing at all that would affect it, there may be very little on much effect.
I'll only point out that's the words of your ordinance, but you're free to do anything you want, so that, um, any other board member want to address it?
I would, I would have used a slightly different phrasing, but to the same effect that Mr. Burrow has changed it, um. I think with the distance from the residential properties, um, and the visual screening that would be put, uh, in the area of the Mabley Center, um, I, and with the other part being pretty much open uh, to the other side of, of the project, um, I would, I would say that there would be no material or not much effect as well.
All right, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that the metal solar proposed special use would not have much effect on the character of the neighborhood and surrounding property. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Okay, gentlemen, you can move on up.
I would like to move that the Lee County's EBA finds that the proposed special use would not impose any negative effects on public health, public safety, and/or general welfare.
Second.
Got a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that the proposed special use would not impose any negative effects on public health, public safety, and/or general welfare. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County's EBA finds that proposed special use would not have a material effect on traffic conditions.
Wait your second.
Second.
Hearing that, anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds the proposed special use would not have a material effect on traffic conditions. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, all those opposed by nay. Motion is passed.
The next motion being, the Lee County's EBA finds that the proposed special use would not have much of an effect on public utility facilities, but it might marginally increase the source of electric power on the grid and decrease electricity costs to community subscribers and the Dixon Park District.
Second.
Sorry?
Got a second, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes? No. Any other board member? Um, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Hughes so well read it displayed on the screen in front of you, adoption by the, uh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. You can keep moving on.
Mr. Chairman, on number seventy-four, I move the Lee County's EBA finds that the proposed SVH, SEC.
May I correct that right now, please?
Okay.
I wondered what that. Okay, maybe, maybe you want to start again.
Okay, we'll start again. The Lee County's EBA finds the proposed metal solar SES project does not carry with it any apparent, or, or any apparent environmental concerns.
Second.
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA finds that the proposed metal solar SES project does not carry with it any apparent environmental concerns. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. By nay. Okey dokey.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that the Lee County's EBA recommends to the Lee County Board that the Meadow Solar LLC petition for special, special use be approved.
Second.
Got a second, anything you want to say about that motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County's EBA recommends to the Lee County Board that Meadow Solar LLC's petition for special use be approved. Adoption of the vote, motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by roll. Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Schoenholz?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Motion's adopted. Always wanted to say that. Okay, we're getting near the end now.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County's CBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, that the two requested variances be allowed on the ordinance mandated condition that for the hundred and seventy-five foot setback reduction from the Mabley Developmental Center. Center, a written waiver be obtained and filed with the Lee County Zoning Administrator. And then I was going to add, before the building permit is issued. That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a second? Uh, anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
Comment.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to put the question. Question being put is on the adoption of the motion by Mr. Pratt, we read and so he added to, um, and is displayed on the screen here in the courtroom in front of you. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Okay. Next.
Next, uh, motion would be, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, the condition be the construction activity shall commence no earlier than seven AM and shall be discontinued no longer later than eight PM on Monday through Saturday within one half mile of a non-participating residence.
Take a look there, Mr. Hughes, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other, uh, do I hear a second?
Noggin.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, although the ordinance does provide for six AM to nine PM, um, you have a fair amount of residential area that, uh, construction equipment, trucks, or, um, laborers would be passing through, um, and I believe that may be somewhat of a disturbance as well as the fact that, um, the route, the construction route to the project goes past, um, the, um, prison, and I believe they have a shift change about six thirty. So primarily for the residential aspect, um, that it covers or goes so near to residential area, I think that that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, a condition be that construction activities shall commence no earlier than seven AM and shall be discontinued no later than eight PM on Monday through Saturday within one half mi- mile of a non-participating residence. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by nay? Okay, you're getting real close now.
Mr. Chairman, on point seventy-eight, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed and it's found that any subsurface drainage tile is damaged within the proposed site, such damage be repaired to the same or better condition within sixty days.
Okay, take a look. I think that's right, but... That look right? Okay, second?
Noggin.
Hear a second? Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, similar comments as what Glenn just had. The aim of talks, as Glenn mentioned earlier, about twelve months and whatnot, but, you know, based on what, you know, our, our experience is doing tiling, I just see no reason that, that, uh, this shouldn't be fixed in a, you know, quicker time than that. And it's just a repair, so it's not a complete replacement or anything like that. So, but I'm open to other ideas.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed and it is found that any subter- subsurface drainage tile is damaged within the proposed site, such damage be repaired to the same or better condition within sixty days. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. Next.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that thereafter your zoning board of appeals considered its findings of fact and recommendations over the course of one session on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, lasting about an hour and sev- or two hours and seventeen minutes in total.
Well, we'll just call that two and a half. How about that?
Two and a half hours is just fine.
I pretend to round in quarters. Okay, let me, uh, just a minute. Let me clean it up a little. That's my... Close. There we go. Okay, take a look, Mr. Schoenholz. That look right?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Noggin.
Got a second? Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Schoenholz?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that thereafter your ZBA considered its findings of fact and recommendations over the course of one session on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, lasting about two and a half hours in total. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Nice job, guys. That was, that was a world record. Off the record, and I turn it back to Mr. Forrester and...
And I would like to ask for a motion to recess until the county board's vote on the above petition, or on this petition on Thursday, September twenty-second.
So moved.
Noggin.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board will be on the sixth of October at seven o'clock. October first.
What time?
Okay.
Is that a Thursday? October thirty, nine AM.
All right.